Good evening. We're 6:06 in the PM on Monday, September 19th, and we're going to open the regular session of the City Council of the City of Crescent City. And, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Ania.
Here.
Councilmember Shalung.
Here.
Councilmember Westfall.
Here.
Mayor Slert.
I'm here, thank you.
And let the record reflect that Mayor Protem Murray is absent.
Very good, thank you. At this time, I guess I would ask, Mr. Ania, would you lead us in the Pledge of Leibens?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everybody here in person tonight, and those that are watching via the live stream on this Chamber of Commerce Day.
Yes.
Be very happy to have the meeting outside if we could. In some of our recent public meetings in the community, there's been some disruptions that have caused some problems in the conducting of business in the city or the county or on particular commissions. And so I just want to remind the folks that are here in person that we are truly trying to conduct the business of the city, of Crescent City in this case, and we appreciate your participation, your input, but it has to be orderly. So with that, we will move forward in conducting business. And, Mr. City Attorney, do we have anything to report out of closed session?
Mayor, no final actions were taken in closed session.
Very good, thank you. Okay, so at this time, we'll move to acknowledgements, and the first one is to read and present a proclamation entitled, "Proclamation Supporting the Designation of Domestic Violence Awareness Month" as October 2011. And I've asked Councilmember Shalung if she would help in read this proclamation.
Honored to, thank you very much. And we have tonight from the Harrington House, Jody Hoon. Oh my gosh, I remember to say it. She is the Executive Director, and also Terry McKeon Ostra, who is the Executive Director of Rural Human Services. So this is a proclamation supporting the designation of Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Once a kept secret among families is now recognized as a serious crime in our community. And whereas domestic violence has severe consequences for survivors, their children, and families, and impacts the quality of life of the entire community. And whereas stopping the cycle of this crime requires not only the resolve and courage of survivors, but also support and involvement from all of us. And whereas enhanced education, prevention, and intervention helps increase public awareness of the severity and extent of domestic violence. And whereas violence in the home is a problem that affects every socio-economic level in our society, occurring in wealthy and disadvantaged neighborhoods, and involving the employed and unemployed. And whereas domestic violence is generally learned and passed down from one generation to another. And whereas our society pays a high price for domestic violence through homelessness, increased crime rates, drug and alcohol abuse, increased medical expenses, and business losses. And whereas during the month of October, local, state, and national domestic violence agencies will sponsor events to help us focus public attention on the problem of domestic violence. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Crescent City does hereby proclaim the month of October 2011 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We encourage all residents to dedicate themselves to learning about reducing domestic violence and violence against women or men in Crescent City. We further encourage all citizens of our community to support Rural Human Services and Harrington House domestic violence programs in our city, and this is signed by our Mayor, Charles Slert.
Speaking on behalf of Harrington House team, we like to thank the City Council for this opportunity. So October is nationally acclaimed as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Every year Harrington House puts on special events to bring awareness to the crimes of domestic violence. As we have done for many years now, we fill the town with purple bears, ribbons, cards, and posters, all to join with our community once again and stand in awareness that domestic violence is no longer acceptable. Together, we really are stronger in ending domestic violence in our community. Last year Harrington House provided 2,848 bed nights to domestic violence victims and their children. We provided domestic violence advocacy and services for an additional 591 non-sheltered people, and we provided 9,304 meals to families experiencing domestic violence, and we performed over 6,310 individual and group counseling sessions. We also provided legal advocacy and restraining orders to over 307 people who experienced domestic violence. Also this year, thanks to our community and its support, we were able to add an expanded prevention program with a full-time prevention advocate dedicated to prevention. We also added a tribal legal access center that works with our local tribes, and a financial independence program that assists domestic violence survivors in finding jobs and building their knowledge and confidence about managing their budgets. Unfortunately, we're still affected by our unpredictable state budget each new fiscal year. However, we are very hopeful and we're very grateful to our community. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Jody. Terry, did you have anything you wanted to offer?
Of course she does.[545.16][545.16](Laughter).
Well, as you know, this is my baby project, so I don't turn it over too lightly, but Jody's doing a great job, and I'm always here to support her. So today I just came to support her and again thank the community, and the city has always been very supportive of the work that we've done and of Rural Human Services. Thank you.
It's a valuable job that you folks are doing in our community, and we appreciate it.
And we hope to see you all at our Cookies for Cops, our annual chamber mixer. You have an invitation here. It'll be an open house at the shelter. If you've never been able to tour it, it's a day to come, and tour it. It's a great soup evening and presentation stall for law enforcement, so we hope that you can come.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to say something.
Please.
Not only is it a beautiful facility, but I'm so grateful that the people you have working there are of such a wonderful caliber, and you do a really great, fantastic job, and I appreciate it, and so do other people in the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Westfall. Thank you, and our team is fantastic.
Yeah.
We don't do it alone.
I've had the pleasure of actually spending some time, not because I'm not a victim of domestic violence, but...
I'm a volunteer here.[629.25][629.25](Laughter).
Thank you. I didn't put that very well. As a volunteer for the Harrington House, and I'm always amazed at the wonderful women that are there, and I always seem to learn more from them than they could ever learn from me, and I'm very grateful for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say that Harrington House does a great service for our community, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, ladies. Okay, at this time, we will offer another acknowledgement. Lindell is here to receive this, and it's a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Crescent City, California, in honor of the 2011 North Coast Stand Down. And it reads, "Whereas, on September 30th to October 2nd, 2011, the sixth annual North Coast Stand Down will take place at the Humboldt County Fairgrounds, and whereas, the purpose of a Stand Down is to reach out to local veterans and their families to provide a hand-up, not a hand-out. And whereas, the term Stand Down is a military one that is used in war times when exhausted combat soldiers requiring time to rest and recover were told to stand down and were taken from battlefields to places of relative security and safety. And whereas, today's Stand Downs are held across the country as grassroots, community-based events designed to help veterans obtain information and access to medical, employment, social service, legal, and other types of assistance. And whereas, approximately one-third of America's adult homeless population has served their country in the armed services. And whereas, the North Coast Stand Down is committed to providing homeless veterans and their families direct access to additional short-term and long-term resources, including shelter and opportunities to begin drug and alcohol recovery. And whereas, like the North Coast Stand Down, the most effective programs for veterans are community-based, nonprofit, veterans-helping-veterans groups. And whereas, the 2010 North Coast Stand Down assisted more than 500 veterans in assessing the services or accessing the services to which they're entitled. And whereas, the 2011 North Coast Stand Down will make a positive difference in the lives of local veterans and their families and raise community awareness of the needs of soldiers returning from active duty. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Crescent City, California recognizes 2011 North Coast Stand Down Board, Coordination Committee, and volunteers for their efforts to address the needs of veterans on the North Coast, and encourages all North Coast veterans in need of services to attend the Stand Down." And that's signed by Charles Slert, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.[820.81][820.81](Applause). You don't have to.[842.22][842.22](Laughter).
I normally don't. Usually Carol does this for me, because I don't do very good at this.
I'm doing just fine.
Okay, but thank you, but I do want to say that this year, we will be having dental care. This is going to be our first year that provide dental for the veterans down there. VFW is also going to be providing transportation, because we do not have drivers, so.
Great.
All right, thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. And I would just offer, as an old veteran of the Vietnam War, I remember the Stand Downs. We had a couple of them, and they were actually very valuable when you were in-country and absolutely exhausted out of ammunition and everything else, to be able to go to a secure area for, in our case, it'd be 24 hours, and stand down, get new clean clothing, hopefully it'd fit, and replace your boots and your ammunition, and go back to the field. So I know firsthand what it was like, and I think this is a great program and very appropriate that has been established throughout the country and here on the North Coast. So I salute you. Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I also want to talk about my appreciation for Lindell.[938.00][938.00](Laughter). Yeah, she was so helpful in our situation. My husband was in the Vietnam War, shooting off howitzers that did damage to his ears, and she was very helpful in helping us procure hearing aids, so thank you.
Thank you, Lindell. Okay, at this time, we will move forward with the consent calendar, and there's four items. Item number five is approval of the regular meeting minutes for September 6th, 2011 Crescent City Council Meeting. Item six, approval of the warrant claims list for the period September 7th through September 19th, 2011. Item number seven, approval of the bi-weekly payroll reports for the period ending September 10th paid September 16th, 2011. And then the fourth item, item number eight, is considering to approve revisions to Resolution Number 2011-19 and adopt Resolution Number 2011-36, an amendment to Resolution Number 2011-19 approving an application for funding and the execution of a grant agreement and any amendments thereto from the planning and technical assistance allocation of the state CDBG program.
Move to approve?
Second.
Have a motion, right?
A statement on the minutes for the meeting of September 6th regarding poop patrol. I see that our city manager put in an ordinance from years ago, and I'd like to address that issue during our reports and concerns at the end of the meeting.
Very good.
Mayor, on item number seven, oh, six, approval of the warrant register, we provided a memo to remove one of the checks on that warrant.
Okay, so noted.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
I can make that a part of my motion for the record if you'd like.
Please, thank you.
Motion to approve consent calendar and addressing item number seven, no, number six, I believe, check number 415855 is to be removed from the warrants.
Second, still.
Okay, a motion and second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion carries unanimously four to nothing. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will adjourn to the Crescent City Housing Authority, item number And convening is the Crescent City Housing Authority. We'll call the Housing Authority to order, and Madam Clerk, would you note that the Chair and the Directors are present?
Yes.
With the exception of Ms. Murray?
Yes.
And at this time, is there public comment regarding Crescent City Housing Authority? Mr. Miles.
Welcome.
Yes, I'd like to make a suggestion to the Housing Authority, if possible, that the Housing Authority themselves could find some funding to purchase some paint, to paint the side of their building, and use the RHS to paint the side of the building to spruce up their building, because currently, a number of businesses downtown have painted their buildings, like Chase Bank and the owner of the buildings where the beautician and some other businesses on Third Street. And I believe that the cost of painting the stucco would not be that much money.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Miles. Is there other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. We have a consent calendar of two items, to approve the regular meeting minutes of August 15th, 2011 of the Crescent City Housing Authority, and then item two, approve the warrant claims list for the period of August 16th, 2011 to September 19th, 2011.
Move for approval?
Second.
A motion and second.
I have one question.
Yes, please.
Legal Services, Megan, is that just Bob Black?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion carries unanimously four to nothing. And then we have a Housing Director's Report. We're going to receive informational report from Executive Director regarding housing set-aside funding, as well as our 2011 CMAP update. Megan?
Yes, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. I have a couple of updates for you this evening. The first is on the status of our set-aside application. I reported to you back in July that I was concerned about our renewal funding being lower than we expected, so to address my concerns with that, I applied for set-aside funding from HUD in three different categories. We applied in additional leasing, unforeseen circumstances, and higher-cost portability. And we received notification from HUD in the end of August that they were awarding us $243,343, which, as you can tell from my face, I'm really happy about. It eliminates any possibility of a funding shortfall, and it also puts us in a very stable position for the next funding cycle, which will begin January 2012. So that's some good news there. We have received all the money that they promised us. We received $197,010 for additional leasing on September 13th, and then the two additional disbursements for higher-cost portability, which was $73,86, and unforeseen circumstances, which was $38,947. Those both came in on Friday, September 16th.
Excellent.
Yes, thank you. So our first priority with that is going to be to bring in the, bring back the 15 families that we referred to the HARP program for the months of July, August, and September. We're going to bring those families back. We're working real closely with HARP on that transition. So far, everybody's scheduled for October 1st. We're hoping everybody will be completely transitioned by then, but if not by then, by November 1st at the latest.
If I could, I just wanted to say...
There's a baby in the room.[1387.01][1387.01](Laughter).
Big kudos to you for being on top of this a few months ago when things were not looking so good, and getting those applications in. And I was pleasantly surprised when I read the report and saw the good information in there, so thank you.
I appreciate that. It was, the process was stressful, and it was time-consuming, and it was complicated, but it certainly paid off.
Very good.
Yeah, and also to your staff, to get your 96% rating and high-performance, you know, achievement is great.
Absolutely. Our CMAP audit looks at 13 different areas of the program, so it represents parts that everybody, the whole staff, does. And with such a small staff, we serve as such a big group of people, it can be hard to make sure that stuff doesn't fall through the cracks. They just work tirelessly, and so appreciative of everyone on the Housing Authority staff.
Excellent.
Great, yes. There was one last thing I wanted to mention real quickly. For any members of the public who are interested, we're trying to get the word out that the Del Norte Homeless Prevention Alliance is planning its Fall Homeless Count for October 15th. And for any members of the public who are interested in volunteering, they can contact Connor Caldwell or Kendra Howerton at CAN. And any donations that anybody wants to make can be taken to the CAN Warehouse, which is on Standard Banier Road off of Lake Earl. Some of the things they're looking for, food, hygiene items, trash bags, backpacks, those can all be taken to the CAN Warehouse.
So, Megan, again, that was the 15th?
The 15th of October, yes. It's a Saturday.
Could we have a drop-off location, maybe at City Hall, for city employees?
Very good.
It's a great idea.
Great, thanks for that good report.
You're welcome.
Okay, there's no public hearing this evening for the Housing Authority, no continuing business, no new business, so we will adjourn till October 17th of 2011 at 6:00 PM. So at this time, we will reconvene now as the Crescent City Redevelopment Agency. And again, Madam Clerk, if you'll have the record reflect that the Chair and the Directors are present?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And is there a public comment for the Crescent City Redevelopment Agency? Mr. Miles?
I'm aware that maybe at the next City Council meeting, staff from the City Planning Department will be approaching you people for some funding after Hammington Construction and George finished the work in our plaza area for some money for landscaping. I hope that money can be found for that area. But I'd like to make a suggestion, too, because I'm a great believer in recycling. When the city gets its new garbage cans from Mr. Sparrow, the other day, the city parks people and the city street people moved three of the concrete garbage can inserts that you can find around town, and put them on the I Street side of the tsunami landing. And the reason they did that is to stop traffic from driving into that, into the areas. But once that's done, we still have three other entrances that something like that needs to be done. And I'd like to suggest that once, you know, all of that's done, that some evergreens or some kind of flowering plants be put in them. Most of them have, the, two of the ones that they did move do have some plants in them, and it sure makes that area look better.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Is there other public comment? Mr. Salisbury?
Welcome. Thank you. Years ago in that area, segue from Mr. Miles was talking about, there was a small park, and I believe if you look at the overlays, it'll show that where that landing was, they had a small park with some of those solid aluminum rocking animals, a little gym, a big concrete turtle for the kids to climb on. I know I took my kids there when they were small. I'd like to see that replaced. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Is there other public comment? Okay, at this time, we'll close the public comment, and we have a consent calendar of two items, approve, approval of the regular meeting minutes of August 15th, 2011 Crescent City Redevelopment Agency, and item two, approval of the warrant claims list for August 16th, 2011 to September 19th, 2011.
Move to approve?
Yeah, a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion carries unanimously four to zero. And at this time, we have no Executive Director report, and no business items, no public hearing, and no new business, so we will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting for October 17th, 2011 at 6:00 PM. 2011 at 6:00 p.m. So at this time, we will move to public hearings, item number eleven, and there are none. So we will have report. And our report this evening is to receive a report from the Crescent City Police Department regarding recent Explorer Leadership Academy. Chief, welcome.
Eric Council, distinguished guests. The beauty of being the chief of police on a small town department, it's a wonderful feeling to see the progress of programs and officers that are flourishing under your command. We have a lot of excellent quality officers on the department protecting the community. This is also the case for Sergeant Apperson and the contingent of explorers that are before you. Sergeant Apperson was hired in 2001. He became an explorer advisor in 2002 on a program that was obviously not flourishing. The program has certainly excelled in all facets of what law enforcement explorer posts are. The opportunity for our kids was put together from a vision that Sergeant Apperson had in putting this Redwood Coast Explorer Leadership Academy. It was given for our kids because we could not afford to send them anyplace else. So the whole purpose was to bring other kids from other posts to this area. The first academy was in the winter of 2003, and it was just a weekend academy, but it's evolved into a week long academy for posts all around the state. The law enforcement academy is a destination now for other posts to come and to grow every single year. With that, I would like to take no more time and be able to introduce you to Sergeant Apperson, as I feel it's very pertinent that he is the one that really showed vision and showed articulation and desire to help the youth of our community. And I think you will see that on the PowerPoint he has to show before the, for the council. So, Air Force Sergeant Apperson, would you please come up here and give your presentation to the council on the Redwood Coast Explorer Leadership Academy?
Hello?
Daddy's little boy.
Yes, I have company today. He...
It's about time you brought him.
He's either going to be here, or he's going to be allowed back there, so he's going to come with me. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this. It's something I'm very passionate about. The Explorer Program, as the chief mentioned, I've been involved for about eight years. Definitely not a singular effort. I've had the support of my agency as well as the city, and I've enlisted several of my friends to help as well. So I want to talk about the Leadership Academy, and sort of where that came from, and how it came to be, and what my future plans are for it. We're at a point where it's about to evolve. So with that, we'll get started. For those of you that aren't familiar with the Explorer Program, it's open to boys and girls ages fourteen through twenty, just short of their twenty-first birthday. Two point five grade point average is actually a local number. The national is two point zero. I learned in high school that you can actually be failing a class and still have a two point zero, so we moved that up to a two point five. Interested in law enforcement? They're often referred to as cadets. You'll hear that terminology frequently. We have weekly meetings and trainings. Currently, we meet on Monday evenings at the police department. They're involved in community events. I could give you a list of dozens and dozens of things that they do annually, but they're basically the kids in the light blue shirts that you see nearly everywhere. And it's about volunteering. That's the cornerstone of the Explorer Program, civil commitment. Here's some numbers. So I've been managing the Explorer Program for about eight years now. We average about ten to twelve kids in the post. Right now, our number's a little bit bigger than that. We have one meeting a week, and we're usually involved in one community event a week as well. That three thousand hour mark, that reflects a conservative estimation of the amount of time I've personally volunteered in the program. I choose to do this on my own time. The question mark is the exponentially larger number that I recruited everybody else to be involved in the program. I think you guys are just going to have to listen to my son cry for a little while. And that thirty-five thousand hour mark is the amount of total hours the explorers have put into the program since I've been coordinating it, which is amazing. That counts volunteer time as well as training time, but the ratio to that is basically for about every three hours we train, we commit seven hours of community service. So you can break that number down. Again, that's a very conservative number. Exploring. It's all about ride alongs. And that's the important part. They get to ride with the police officers. A lot of times, if you're an explorer, you sort of emulate the police officers, and you want to see what they do, and you just kind of look up to them. And so that's a big part of the program. Career oriented training, of course. We try to get them trained up in uniform appearance, and communications, public service, dealing with the public. We try to expose them to national events and competitions as well as local events. We were able to send the post last year to the national conference, which was sort of a big deal. I don't think our post historically has been able to do that until this point. And it's my goal that that's, that was a precedence. We'll continue to do that every other year that it's available. We teach them respect for police officers, law enforcement officials, as well as other explorers, which also involves themselves. Self-respect is a big deal in this program. What I'm here to talk about tonight's leadership skills, and that's sort of my little transition into this Leadership Academy. And I'll try to make this as quick as possible. I think there's only like twelve slides. Redwood Coast Explorer Leadership Academy, it began as a weekend academy, like the chief mentioned. And I remember the conversation. Essentially, it was Dana Reno and I, we were working a night shift, and we had a pretty good Explorer Program going, and we kind of thought, what can we do for the kids to expose them to some dynamic training and some, some good opportunity other than just sort of observing what we do? And the idea was, let's sort of host a weekend camp, and let's recruit the officers that we know that are sort of good at specific topics, and we'll allow them to be the teachers at that camp. The school district was nice enough to let me use Crescent Elk for a weekend, and I believe it was November, it was raining, and we were there for about three days, two nights, and that kicked off the first camp. Through that, it sort of evolved because obviously, winter wasn't a great time to have kids running in and out of buildings, and a weekend wasn't quite long enough, and some classes we liked and some we didn't. And it just continued to evolve. It was essentially a response to lack of funding. There wasn't much in the Explorer budget line when I got there, and the ones who used it, there, you had to be pretty creative on how you're going to generate more funds. So the first academy was funded by money out of pocket from several people that I just knew. A lot of police officers got together and paid for it, as well as the Police Officers Association for Crescent City, which I happened to be the president at the time, decided to give a small monetary donation to sort of get it off the ground. All instructors and staff, obviously, were a hundred percent volunteer. And again, the Del Norte Unified School District was nice enough to give us a facility for a weekend. It's now a week long event. It's geared towards leadership and team building. It's not so much just an exposure to law enforcement as much as it's geared with specific goals for them to walk away with, sort of getting them out of their shell, and being more comfortable in a leadership position. The Elk Valley Rancheria stepped up to underwrite the associated costs that facilitates me being able to offer it to our local explorers for free, which is wonderful. And they've made the commitment to do that every year we're willing to have this event. Like the chief also mentioned, it's now a destination. And what's interesting about that is it was built because we were unable to go somewhere else. Well, now I'm consistently contacted by posts from out of the area that want to come here, Eldorado County, Fortuna, Eureka, Humboldt, Del Norte. I continue to be contact, I've already been contacted by Reading and Sacramento this year. So it continues to grow. And I'm still able to offer for free for our kids.
Eric, do you charge the out of town kids?
I do. There's a number I came up with. Basically, we buy supplies in bulk, and again, I don't have to pay for anybody to be there. So every dollar I get, I stretch pretty far, and I've been able to kind of come up with this number that's around a hundred and fifty bucks a kid from out of the area, which is, within itself, pretty impressive, because they're there for a week, I'm feeding them, I'm giving them all the things that they need to be successful, and the courses of study and supplies. I'm able to get nice awards at the end, and, you know, flags, and things to sort of garnish the event. So right around that hundred and fifty dollar mark, we don't make anything off of it. And if there is any overage, we put it back into the academy for better equipment. Some more numbers. Coordinators. I'm always a coordinator, and whoever I can rope into it that I trust is a co-coordinator. You see Nate Trim over here. He, he works for Pelican Bay State Prison. He usually takes a week off of work to come out with me, and he uses his own vacation time, and he's my right hand man. Recently, I've also had Tim McLean from Eldorado County Sheriff's Office, he steps up and donates a week of his time. Last year, his kids weren't able to come because of financial reasons with their department. He still took a week off, drove up here and co-coordinated the program with me because he believes in it. Drill instructors, usually have three to five of them. Those are the guys all in black with campaign hats, do a lot of yelling, a lot of instruction. The prerequisite for that is they have to be Marines or former Marines currently employed in a law enforcement capacity. I have liutenants from the prison taking a week off, coming out here and pulling up their RVs to Crescent Elk to be my drill instructors. General instructors, these are going to be your law enforcement professionals, be it a judge, a district attorney, a police officer, deputy, highway patrolman, people, again, from Pelican Bay. These are all people that are not just available, these are people that, in my experience, I consider to be experts in the field that they're instructing. And the interesting thing about it is it's a privilege to instruct at this academy. It's a privilege to volunteer, and I do not have to recruit the instructors. I actually have to turn them down. They find me every year, and I get to sort through this great group of people and pick the best. Food preparation, again, that's just people donating their time. Role players, we do scenario based training. Safety officers, the kids are exposed to OC, they are exposed to rigorous physical fitness activities. Sometimes we need people there to make sure everything's safe. General staff, these are going to be the gophers. Usually, they're the explorers that are a little too old to attend, and now they're rolling into our VIPS program. We have a few of them over here. And just the explorers. Typically, the, the group of explorers attending ranges in size from about twenty-five to thirty-five. Curriculum. These are examples of courses of instruction. Usually, they're two to six hours in length. Ethics and cultural diversity. Chief Plack has been kind enough to instruct that course since the beginning of the academy. CPR and first aid, we get them certified every year. Drug awareness, street and prison gangs, that's two separate courses. Report writing, traffic investigation, vehicle operations. We'll set up a low speed driving course with parallel parking and maneuvering. Courtroom testimony. We'll go to a court after hours. We'll get a judge, and a bailiff, and a district attorney, and a defense attorney, and they'll come in at seven o'clock at night, and we'll make a mock trial. Search and rescue, we rappelled last year out of Pebble Beach. We've toured Pelican Bay. Defensive tactics, ground fighting, CHP, Orlando helicopter, K-9 presentation, grooming and hygiene, bike patrol, firearm safety, use of force, and a general introduction to criminal justice. Lots and lots and lots of physical training. Drill instruction, team building, problem solving exercises. We'll wake them up in the middle of the night at some point during the week, and, and we'll present them with some disaster scenario that they have to deal with before they can go back to bed in just about enough time to be woke up again. And more physical training. Day one testing versus last day testing, that's one of my favorite things, because I'm actually able to show improvement. And it's amazing how much improvement you will see in one week, even physically. You would think that that wouldn't happen, but there's just, the numbers are tremendously different, as well as academic. Explorers, at the end of the event, they're recognized for leadership, academics, physical fitness, motivation, and most improved. Those are the general awards. We don't give those out every year. Somebody actually has to earn them. And there is a formal graduation ceremony at the end. And it's a pretty emotional thing. There's, there's a little bit of crying, there's a lot of handshake, and there's a lot of proud parents and proud kids, and it's, it's moving. Future goals. Taking the lid off. In the past, even though this has been successful, I realize I'm tasked with managing it. It's kind of my monster, so to speak, and I, and I always want it to do well. So I've kept that number around thirty. I really didn't want to have more than forty, otherwise you have to start these sort of round robin class schedules, and double the instructors, and things like that. Plus, for me to be mechanically involved, it just would take more. So I'm going to remove that ceiling because I have a deep rooted support system. A lot of people have stepped up in the last two years and said, give me an opportunity to help. And we're going to make it kind of a modular program in the sense where there will be one person responsible for food, and we'll have three nutritionists that will come in and, and sort of co-agree on what the diet will be. And we will have other people responsible for the courses of instructions overseeing that. We're going to standardize the curriculum with Post California Police Academy. There's learning domains at the Police Academy. For example, ethics, like I mentioned earlier, there's a specific book when you go to the Police Academy that outlines everything you need to know about ethics to take a proficiency test to move on in the academy. I've already obtained all those books, and I will make the ethics block cover that information. So that way, if I standardize the information, I can make the test prior to the event, and if I need to have different instructors, as long as they go over that information, I know everybody's getting the same level of education. I'm attempting to obtain articulation with local vocational course, so explorers will receive educational points. I'm going to start out with high school credits, but I was actually able to articulate a class that I teach on the side to get college units. I'm going to try to make that happen for this course as well. We're going to have a formal opening ceremony that'll include keynote speakers. And our regional target will expand to the West Coast. I don't, I want to step out of California. We've had some Oregon posts in the past, but I'd like to go as far north as Washington. So these are some numbers for the upcoming academy, and I would welcome anybody here to attend the graduation if they'd like. It's going to be at Del Norte High School. It's a bigger facility, and it's a little bit more modern, and there's going to be better opportunity for them to PT. It'll be August thirteenth through August eighteenth. That's a Monday through a Saturday. We're already have a, we have a committee set up right now. We're having monthly meetings to sort of stay on track with this. It's going to be a major undertaking. The opening ceremony will be at nine o'clock in the morning on Monday. I'll talk to you another time about what's going to happen there. We have ears at the meeting, and I just don't want them to know yet. And graduation will be at 2:00 p.m. on Saturday. And again, it will remain completely free to our local explorers. My target group of explorers locally, I want to hit thirty, and the overall target for the academy, I want to be at a hundred. And this is a little recruitment video that we're sending out to other posts, just so they can kind of get an idea of what we do, and then we have a little presentation with them. I believe if you just hit the space bar, it should go. There should be sound attached to this, too. Just pretend there's some really motivational music in the background. There's going to be some people in the crowd unhappy about some of these pictures. There's going to be some people in the crowd unhappy about some of these pictures. They signed the release. So this is definitely something, uh, I believe in very much, you have a room full of people that also believe in it. And the good news is I'm not here to ask for anything, it's, it's an independent program, it runs well, uh, we're doing just fine and, and I think we're only getting better. And while I have the microphone in front of me, uh, I just want to acknowledge a guest. DJ Milligan actually just completed boot camp and he's one of my former explorers, he's the Marine behind me with the big white hat.
Hey DJ.
And I think I speak for us all when I want to thank him for his commitment to our country. And I just want to make it clear that I am very proud of him and he is exemplary as to what we're trying to produce with our program. We have Cassie Johnson, who was also a former explorer, uh, she's doing great things for Victim Abbott Casino. Rosio Allaman, um, she's headed off into the Marines shortly, I think, as soon as those braces come off. And, and we have a lot of up-and-comers, uh, we also have uh, developed the VIPS program to target a broader spectrum of people. So we're able to take some of the explorers that are staying in the community as well as people in that age demographic, uh, and they're joining VIPS as well and, uh, everything's running well.
Any questions from the council?
I have no questions, just a, a comment and just want to say, I'm just so proud of you and all the kids that have participated in this program. I've seen it grow over the years and I've seen you grow and I've seen Cassie, you know, go through the program and um, I just, I couldn't be more prouder and I think this is just one small example of the great things that people in our community can do for the kids that live here, um, and you should be extremely proud of yourself.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And feel free to ask, uh, any of the explorers anything you like as well.
Okay, Eric, um, I am so impressed by this program. And I just want to share something with you that, um, my husband and I have produced a couple of movies, none of them commercial successes yet. But we're movie buffs and, um, when you mentioned that they have to have a two-point-five grade point average, I thought, that sounds a little low to me. Um, there was a movie with Bruce Willis and it called Armageddon. And there's a scene where there's a physicist and one of them says, do you want to trust a physicist that got a C?
Right.
So what I'm saying is that are the, is the two-point-five a little bit low for our kids?
Well, the, uh, the explorers is regulated under a program called Learning for Life, which is actually under the Boy Scouts of America umbrella. They set the mark at two-point-O by policy, uh, so for me to increase that at all, I think is a pretty clear sign, we can always increase it, but then we start to rule people out and, and, and it's really not what this program's about, um, I, I haven't. I, I allow kids to come, we, we pay for everything they need to participate and I believe that two-point-five is a good number. At two-point-five, I wouldn't have been able to be an explorer when I was in high school.
Oh. Well, and not only that, it's probably going to give them the confidence, um, to maybe even strive to, to do better things and get better grades.
And I've seen that.
Yeah.
But I hear what you're saying, two-point-five isn't great.
But it's good.
Uh, Sergeant Appertson, I'd, I'd like to salute you for your, uh, vision and your commitment to the community and to this program and it just shows you, uh, build it and they will come. And that's what's happened, you've, you've, uh, just done extraordinary thing, I also want to salute the volunteers, uh, Nate and others that participate because, uh, without that support, uh, it wouldn't be able to have the successes I think that you're having. So kudos to you all for a great job you're doing.
Thank you and I, and I'm glad you brought that up, I mean, without the volunteers, I would just be a guy with an idea, you know? So, thank you.
Any of the explorers want to say anything?
Okay, that was a great report, um. We will move to, uh, communications and at this time we will have public comment, uh, period. Any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of the, of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to the staff for appropriate action which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone, uh, are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After, uh, receiving recognition from the mayor, please state your name and, uh, city or county residency for the record and public comment is limited to three minutes, public comment. Mr. Salisbury?
Oh Eric, you left too soon. I can't believe it was ten years ago that, man, time flies when you're getting old, huh? Um, I sure would have liked to have heard some stories from our newest Marine there. Yeah, I'm going to leave it there, that was, that was just great.
You might catch them.
That was just awesome.
Yeah, you might catch them out there, they're probably out there chatting.
Thanks Jesse, Mr. Miles.
It's my understanding that at your next meeting will be um, kind of October budget time for the city. And I hope at that time my city can find a little money. And I want to explain why I hope you can find a little money. The other day I was taking a bicycle ride because I've been told I got to lose some weight if I want to stay healthy. So I've been touring around on my bicycle. I went by Shoreline Campground. I want to thank the RH crew for the painting they done over there, but at the same time it's time and this, there's been a lot of talk about this. There's been talk about doing a sign for over there. So people coming into ma- town can locate our RV park. Because the current sign over there is on top of the building. It's a little disgraceful because it's made out of plastic and there's so much green algae on it, it's an embarrassment. When I was over there, there was a couple of city employees over there working and I appreciate when I see my city employees making improvements in the city. But one of them had an excellent idea and I want to explain this, my best in my ability because I do have a gripe that sometimes we could do a better job of branding Crescent City. Over there, there's an old office, it's a little building about half the area of this from here to the dais. It's sat over there, it's not being used for anything. And I want to pass along the suggestion that building could physically be moved over to the park that's next to the lighthouse and somehow manned by volunteers. I think it'd be an asset for the city. Person that worked for the city said, you know, they could, t-shirts could be sold out of it, postcards could be sold out of it. Crab pots could be rented. It could be an income generator for the city. The reason I'm saying this is because the other day when I was riding my bike, a tourist bus stopped by our park, a whole bunch of travelers from Germany got off the bus, it was high tide, they couldn't visit the lighthouse. They wandered around the park, used the park facilities and took photographs.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Is there other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment and move to, uh, item number twelve, continuing business. Uh, consider and accept a proposal from, uh, JWC Environmental for the, uh, purchase of a septic receiving station and authorize the city manager to sign all necessary documents. Mr. Plaza, do you want to address this first or Mr. Barnes? Welcome Jim.
Thank you, um. As you know, there's been kind of an ongoing process and, uh, so we solicited four different companies for bids and received two and, uh, you have those that, the lowest in front of you and as we negotiated, we changed some of the materials we were using and in the end it ended up a hundred and seventy-six thousand, so. Uh, we have that part of it, which is a direct purchase and then, uh, it's very, should be fairly easy to install, we need power and we need a tapor slab for it, so that'll be done in-house. In-house forces. And then we should be set up. Now what, uh, I need to do is, uh, set up a, uh, structure for how much we would want to charge and for that, uh, Gene and I could work together and come up with a strategy for that and, uh, so how that would work, so.
Does, uh, I think I just answered my own question.
Uh, Mr. Barnes, uh, in, in your, back in August, uh, you were suggesting that the installation might cost sixty thousand and now you've, uh, refined that down to thirty thousand?
I have because, um, as I began talking to the supplier and see what we need, it's, seems easier to me in the end of what we need to do, so.
Great.
That's the reason for that.
Moving in the right direction. And, and I also saw in, uh, reading through the spec material, uh, for this, uh, honey monster.
Uh, what is it? Muffin monster, honey monster, that's exactly what it is.
That, that it's not possible to, uh, do, uh, two downloads simultaneously.
To do what now?
To, to have two, uh, trucks doing deposits or downloads simultaneously.
No, 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 one truck at a time. And, uh, there could be a time when you'd have a couple of trucks sitting there, but then that's all right, right now they're traveling for a couple of hours to get to where they're going, so, and it won't take that long to, uh, empty a truck.
Okay. Any questions?
I have one quick question, um, have you considered staff time? Is this going to, um, use any of our staff time?
Yes. But, uh, it shouldn't use that much staff time, we're going to have some more, um, a bin of solids we're going to have to deal with. And there's things that ha- whenever you have equipment, there's things that happen to that equipment, as it's newer, there'll be less things to deal with, but there's always something to deal with. Nonetheless, we think it, uh, for our plant, we'll keep the, uh, rates lower for a longer, I mean, at the same level for a longer period of time because we'll be generating some money.
And the staff that will be dealing with the septic acceptance station will have training on ma- and learn how to do maintenance?
Yeah, we have in here, a, uh, the owner representative will come and do training. And then there's also, uh, supplying an O and M manual.
Okay. Great.
Very good, other follow-up questions, clarifications?
Jim, just one, I, it's probably in there and I didn't see it, what's the warranty on this, is it guaranteed for a while?
Well, it's guaranteed for, uh, a year. But, uh, within that year, you generally know what issues you have.
I guess I'm asking the lifetime of it, five, ten years maybe?
No, it'll be longer than that.
Good, okay.
Um, the only thing that I have, um, to say is that I'm very much in favor of profit centers. And I'm even more in favor of reducing the rates to the rate payers, so unless I've, uh, feel confident that someone's going to start seriously addressing a formula that allows these profit centers to reduce rates, I don't feel like I can support these plans, so that's where I stand.
Thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Barnes, didn't we talk about, um, that we, you, your assessments were, it was a one to two-year payback?
What I, yes, I said a year and a half to two years and, um, that's, but again.
That can change.
Yeah, and, uh, as Gene and I talk with the, with the haulers, come up with a rate and then we'll see how much we're going to receive, then that's kind of the way we'll define how much we're going to make and how we're doing on it, I mean, nothing in this life is a sure thing. But you, but certain things seem more sure than others and this is a, this is a pretty good.
Well, not only that, it's going to allow local people to have a service they haven't had before and for it to probably create some jobs, so I have a hard time understanding why you couldn't support something like that.
I just explained it.
So, so, um, uh, just to follow up, uh, let's say we can pay this back in a year and a half's time. I believe it's the intention of, uh, the city to use any revenues that would be generated to offset uh, potential, uh, increases in the future regarding the wastewater treatment plan, I mean, that was, I think the whole discussion from the very beginning was about, uh, here's an opportunity uh, that we can provide a service and, uh, actually generate some revenues that in the, the, uh, long-term can go back to offsetting, uh, the cost, uh, to the sewer rate users.
Yes, and, uh, when we did the wastewater treatment plan years ago, um, the city was basically shut down as far as any expansion, any growth, any new homes, any new businesses in town. And there was a tremendous need to do something and now that it's done, it predict- it presents us with opportunities. And the fact we can And the fact we can provide for the septic haulers a location where they can put their septic with a plant that is built in such a way that we can receive it, because a lot of plants can't deal with it. Right now, ours is a plant that can, and because of what we have done. That, those opportunities, like taking Albers on and receiving that revenue, provides jobs in the community. It allows for the expansion of the community, not just sewer rates, but tax-paying jobs in the community, which is what really helps the community and really moves us forward. And so that's why with the expansion, it allows us to build something like this, provide a service for the entire community. And it does provide, for the septic, the folks that have septic tanks out, it'll provide a closer place, hopefully a cheaper solution for all those people. So that it provides a service to the region, as well as providing revenue for the city. And so in most ways, it's really a positive thing all the way around.
Well, absolutely, because the people using septic systems that are hauling, having it hauled right now to Willets or Roseburg, Medford, yeah. You know, they're paying all those transportation costs.
And not only is it transportation costs, the truck is down. I mean, it's moving instead of going and picking stuff up and taking care of it. So it makes quite a difference.
Plus the liabilities associated therewith. So, and I'd like to also salute the citizens of the community that came forward early on. Richard, who's here with us tonight, came to my office, and Ricardo. And they've been very interested in this and introducing it. And I think it's very proactive and positive. And I think it shows that we can actually get something done, so it's, I appreciate it. Thanks, Jim. Are there questions from the council? Public comment? Mr. Miles?
I want to thank Ms. Long and you Charles, and people like Ricardo and Richard, for having the insight, like some people that are on the dais, that realize that this is good for the whole community. Not only the residents of the city, but the residents of the county. I'm aware that the state water quality board, well, is in the process of making new rules for the residents of the county that have septic systems. And this will be a solution to that given problem. So I want to thank you for having the insight to give Jim the authority to go purchase, whatever you call this thing. But I do have a little concern that has been addressed in the past, but we, the residents of the city, have not seen a solution. Currently, I think the city will need to make a decision on the access frontage to our wastewater plant. And the reason I'm saying this is I don't want to see Howe Drive be used for these trucks going down Howe Drive to the sewer plant. So I believe a decision needs to be made about, by this council, about what they're gonna do about the road in Beachfront Park around the sewer treatment plant.
Good point, Richard.
Thank you, Richard. Is there a public comment?
Yeah, that was one of my points of contention, is actually where would we be putting it there for access? Yeah, if we're gonna be able to recoup the cost in one and a half to two years, that's great. I wonder if we're gonna be putting in some kind of a replacement fund or up, for upkeep? I mean, you gotta think about those dollars too. I know you are, I'm just stating the obvious, I'm sure. I was wondering, how many gallons this is gonna be?
I think it's two.
Two hundred thousand?
Take six hundred gallons a minute. And, you know, it's a flow rate, so.
So it's not, it doesn't have like a storage to it?
Jesse, come to the, come to the microphone.
No, it doesn't have a storage, and it separates.
I think we're taking Mr. Salisbury's public comment time.
Well, no, actually, I'm stopping it every time Jim stops.
Okay. It'd be easier if he finished, was able to finish his thoughts, and then we could have, yeah.
Okay, and well, with the gallons, I was wondering if it would help our INI problem? Because that was kind of the idea that I had. Because the problem that we have down there is during the rainy season, we have all the inflow and infiltration going there, and all this extra water going to our sewer treatment plant. And it, well, it was inundating the plant to where, to the point where we were having to pump, you know, bad stuff in the water and getting fined. I like the idea of this honey monster, it's gonna cut down the solids, because it actually helps to liquefy the stuff and send it through our system, which'll even make it cheaper for us. And the, I think everybody's gonna love not having to haul their septic to White City. And, I mean, the money that they're gonna save is really gonna help out people. I think it's gonna lower the cost for these. There's more and more systems are failing here. I mean, they're just, they're not getting any younger, and then, you know. And there's a lot of people out there that are letting them fail because they can't afford to do anything about that. And this might help that out.
Thank you, Jesse. Jim, did you want to finish up?
Well, the process records who's coming, who has come in, tracks what type of septic it is, whether it's corrosive, or destructive to our biological systems, and shuts it off before it goes into the plant. It washes the organics. It separates the organics and inorganics, and puts the inorganics in a bin. And then the organics go in with the water. And so it...
So it really has nothing to do with the INI, does it?
Oh, the INI, has nothing to do with that.
Yeah.
And one of the things about INI is you get a little bit of flow coming in every joint of your pipe. And so with a hundred miles of pipes, and just a trickle coming into each one, or maybe there's a crack on the top, although we TV the pipes every couple of years. We look at every pipe to see if we can see any issues. Generally, at one point in my career, I thought I could go find the INI. But as the years have gone by, I find that you can't necessarily find it because it's consistent throughout the piping system, very little. It's hard to fix, it truly is. And that's why no cities have fixed the problem. And so we have taken our treatment plant, we've expanded the outfall to five times what it was. We put in pumps that pump two and a half times what they used to pump, so that we could run the water through the plant. It's only a few days a year that you have an INI problem, and it would cost just millions and millions and millions of dollars to fix, even begin to fix the problem. Maybe you get 10% for $10 million or something, it just really isn't worth it. So what you do is you do what you can with TV in the lines, smoke tests, and other things like that to try to find the problem. And then you make sure your plant can handle it, so we don't have a safe way water coming up there issue, which we should not have anymore.
Jim, where's the location that you want to have that? And which way will the trucks come in?
It, it's going to be, I'm not exactly sure, but it'll be along B Street, is my thinking. And either along B Street or right there at the corner on B and Battery, so.
So the trucks won't be using Howe Drive, which isn't a truck route anyway?
They won't, of course, no, we would never do that. That wouldn't be appropriate. In regards to the question about where we're gonna do with Howe Drive, we were gonna look at that with the Beachfront Park master planning process. And then we'll know what we're gonna do and see if we have the money for it. In the meantime, I may talk to Gene about putting a cul-de-sac with gravel down there, because a lot of people try to turn around with bigger motorhomes and things, and it's pretty hard for them right now.
Off topic, but are we serving the Shelter Island mobile home?
Which one now?
Shelter Island on North Crest? Before you get down to the, where it goes out to Pine Grove?
That's Premier West, where the county just dug the new sewer line, after Shelter Island?
Premier West?
Well, it is...
No, Shelter Island is the one right on the straight stretch of, right behind, like Crescent City Family Practice.
Oh. I'm not sure of that. I just, we could, we have sewer lines, actually. Our sewer lines only went to Madison, so if it's, if it's away from...
I was just told that they have some major issues.
Most of the trailer parks out there do have major issues. And, but now, we can go clear down to where Crashers was. And so we can deal with that. And so there, the real question on those is if you have a thirty... They have about, Crashers, I think, has about forty mobile homes. That would be thirty hookups, $300,000. Where do they come up with $300,000? You know, they, you sold every trailer in there, you couldn't get...
Three hundred.
So it is, it gets to be a problem for the, for the mobile home parks to know how they're gonna hook up, and so...
Although they've cleaned that up quite a bit.
They really have. The new owners have been very good about that. But there's that trailer park that is having septic, septic tank problems. I don't know about the one on Old Mill Road, that would be just across from that trailer park. And so there's several trailer parks up that way, and we need to really consider how we want to deal with it. Because it'd be nice to be getting monthly charges for all those. But they will have a problem hooking up, and so we were, Gene and I, were gonna begin talking about that. And I think they're gonna come in and talk with us, the Wests, who own that Crashers. They didn't call that, I think it's called Point West or something.
West, West Properties.
West Properties, yeah.
So will that be on our... Um, the, to evaluate the alternatives to finance sewer hookup fees that we've been asking staff to work on? Is that gonna be part of that report?
It would be, I would think, if we're, if, yes. It's important. You have the facilities, now how do we allow them to hook up?
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Barnes. Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for an action.
I'd move to approve accepting the proposal from JWC Environmental for the purchase of the septic receiving station, authorizing the city manager to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
I have a motion of second. Madam clerk, would you hold the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
No.
And Mayor Slert?
Yes. So the motion carries on a vote three to one.
Yeah, really quickly, how, what's, what's the length of, length of the process? When will we be able to accept septic? That's probably something people will want to know.
Yeah, I would think it's gonna take them ten or 12 weeks to make it. And so it'll be this winter that we'll be putting all the facilities in. So that's, I would think by, by, oh, March or so. So it'll, it takes a while to get everything together, but yeah.
Great.
I do have one quick question. Is this gonna be set up so RVs and travelers can get at it, like through maybe the chamber conference or somebody there?
I don't think so.
You don't think so?
No, I, I would, I, somebody else asked me that today, and we'd have to really give that some thought. But I don't want to be in the process of some guy coming up and then giving me five bucks to, you know, I mean, who's he gonna pay? I, I wanted specified haulers to dump there. And then all the, those folks with the motorhomes and so on can dump somewhere, and then they can, people can haul it over to us. That seems more appropriate.
Great, thank you, Jim. Okay, so we'll move on to new business. Item number 13 is consider and waive the full reading, read by title only, and introduce ordinance number 763 in ordinance adopting regulations to implement the Digital Infrastructure and Video Competition Act of 2006 and adopting penalties for violations on customers' service standards. Mr. Plaza?
Mayor, members of the council, good evening. The item before you, traditionally, cities have had control over cable franchise business. And that changed in 2006 with some legislation that was enacted. And what the legislation in condensed version states is, you know, once your franchise expires, then you fall under the state, you know, franchise agreements that have been adopted. It came to me probably about a month ago, or three weeks ago, I've been working here a month, that our cable franchise is expiring, and it actually expired yesterday. And at this point in time, you know, the staff is recommending that the city council adopt an ordinance in compliance with the state requirements. What the ordinance does, it puts in place, you know, three items. It sends to the cable companies, this would be Charter Communication, that we would still like to collect our franchise fee. In the current, our expired agreement, it's 5%, and the state sets the limit of 5%, so we continue to collect that fee. It would also, you know, provide the public education and programming channels. Currently, we have one PEG channel that is currently activated. We do have the capability of requesting up to three at some point in time if we, you know, use those, you know, fully program those channels. What staff is recommending for this ordinance is to also collect a 1% fee for capital facilities and equipment, you know, for programming that would be in relationship with, you know, those PEG channels. And that would be, you know, for instance, the best example is video equipment for council chambers, you know, upgrade, monitoring, and so you can air your public meetings, you know, on that PEG channel. The third item that's covered in the ordinance is, you know, the customer service penalties. So if the franchise provider isn't complying, you know, with the state law, then we have some ability to go after it with some penalties. So we recommend adopting this ordinance. I'd like to answer any questions?
Any comments, questions?
So if our franchise agreement had not expired, would we still, if we had, would we have had the opportunity to renew it on a local level?
No.
Okay.
No, the state law changed that in 2006.
Because of the new law in 2006?
Correct.
Okay. And number three, I'm just a little concerned about who monitors? I mean, how do you, how do you determine that they're not providing good customer service? And who monitors that, and...
Yeah, in my experience, that's typically by complaints. If, you know, one of our citizens, you know, has a concern, you know, they call up cable, it's not, you know, being addressed, they would call the city, you know, overall, because, you know, we hold the franchise. And we can work with the cable company to correct that. And if we see that they're not, you know, complying, I would have to turn to our city attorney on what, how we would, you know, not monitor that, but, you know, some teeth to that.
I just don't want to see it costing us money.
What do you mean, by employee tax? You know, I've had some problems with Charter Cable with, actually on the cable TV, it's Channel Eight that has the news from San Francisco. In fact, one weekend, it had a picture with no sound, so I called Charter on, I guess I could've done it on Sunday, but they weren't gonna come out. Called them on Monday, they checked the channel, called me back and said yes. And they gave me a monetary credit on the next bill. And that's how they're doing a lot of it now, because they can't fix it right away, and they'll give you a credit for it. But it's like you said, it's a customer complaint. And it doesn't happen all the time. I mean, if it happened all the time, then probably the city would need to get involved.
But I just need to call the cable company, tell them about the problem, they'll correct it.
We've actually had several times problems with the television and I just hate it when I can't see Dancing With The Stars. But it, it has, I mean, it's just amazing. There might be a football game on on the weekend.
Yeah, like right now, Charles.
And, and you can't get access to it or it goes blank or the color bars come on. And we have, actually had a good amount of problems with the computer over time. And that's the policy that, that Charter, now Frontier, has taken in the past. What, what, or, is that true, Frontier?
Well, Charter.
Charter. It is, you know, they'll give you a, a credit for a day or something, but it's been kind of a hassle. So I'd be concerned that, you know, they're, they're accountable in delivering the product.
Is this exclusive, once we have this, can another company commit? Or this is an exclusive franchise?
No, I have to get back, I, I believe so. I'll just go back to you on that.
I think so. I, I think...
It has been, I just, nothing's changed.
I think in oh-six, we renewed our franchise, or somewhere around there, when I was on the council. And then also, when I met with Mr. Palazzo, I referred him to the possibility of auditing, whether we're actually getting one percent, or the five percent of the actual total dollars they're collecting for this area, because they have raised their rates quite a bit, too.
The, the thing I do like is, is the additional one percent for the PEG channel. To me, I've always wished that these meetings could be live for the board of supervisors in the council. And I think that that would help facilitate that. And then I think of the people in motel rooms when they come here, if we had a Channel Four that described our local assets in the community, like when we travel to other communities, I think it's a pretty natural thing to turn on that cable TV and find out what's happening locally.
You know, a tourism channel that talks about your local communities, like it's not, you know, paid advertising. You know, you can do something that, that educates, you know, the local community and our customers.
Is this another four-year contract? I didn't see it.
I believe this is, you know, you know, we adopt the ordinance and then it complies with state law, so it's...
Oh, we're just complying?
Yeah, there's no, there's no end date to that.
Great. Thanks, Gene. Is there a public comment? Mr. Miles?
I wanna thank our city manager and Bob for being on top of this one. I do have a concern and I'd like to express this the best I can. A number of years ago, and I'm referring to what Kelly said about, maybe it was four or five years ago, my county and my city were gonna go in together and address this franchise problem. And the reason was, is was to make it possible for the live telephication of these meetings. I'd like to see something else. When I visit my parents in Monterey County, the university, UC Monterey, has an educational channel. And I would hope that we would work with the College of Redwoods to have an educational channel, too. Not too long ago, a year and a half ago, I went, had to go down and dog sit, sit when my parents went to Japan. And, you know, you could only watch so much football or ba, it was baseball season then. So, and you can only watch so much History Channel. I got hooked on watching their, the live broadcast of their classroom programs. And I thought it was very educational and students were able to attend class by auditing the TV programs.
Very good. Thanks, Mr. Miles. Any other public comment? Mr. Salisbury?
So if we just adopt this right now, then this is our choice. We don't have another choice to change. There may be another cable company. I know...
My understanding was, isn't it until there's a second loop, so it's redundant in the broadband system?
No, that's internet service. This is just cable TV and I think that there is no other provider here.
There's no other provider.
I'm hearing the discussion from...
There's no other provider. There never has been for the ten years I've been here. It's Charter and nothing, or satellite.
I know, you know, there's other cable companies out there and I know over the years we've had problems with Charter Cable. I know we've said, we want you to run cable out to Barrow or we want a T-line or, and they say, oh, yeah, you know, we're gonna bend over backwards and do all this stuff. And then they get the franchise and here we're still sitting here with none of that.
Well, act, well, I'm not gonna take up your, I'll comment in a minute.
Yeah, well, okay. And that, so that really was, that was my comment. Oh, other than, yeah, on the cable side, I know I have my computer running on cable and I have a, a monitor on there and my, my computer's on all the time. So whenever the cable goes out, the blue line stops and it's clear, you know, and it says no connection. And it's pretty regular of cutting out. Thank you.
And that's the same service, right? Thank you.
Charter actually has invested quite a lot of money into this community. They've ran new fiber optic lines. And I, I don't know all the details, but I do know that they've invested millions of dollars in the last probably five years in new fiber optics. They're also working, I know that they've been part of the process, I think, in trying to work through tri-agency, I believe, to create some redundancy in the internet broadband scheme of things. So I think they have actually been responsive to some of the needs here. And as far as the, I don't know, I don't lose my TV very often, but I do lose the local channels quite often. And that's not actually a Charter thing. It's the service providers for those TV channels like KIEM out of Eureka. When their tower has issues, then we will have issues with their, like Channel Three here. I've noticed Three and eleven are the ones that I have problems with the most. And Six, I think it is.
Thank you. Okay, is there a motion?
Yes.
I'll move that we waive the full reading, by title only introduce ordinance number seven sixty-three.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalung?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert.
Yes. So the motion carries unanimously at four to zero. Thank you. So that concludes our regular business. At this time, we will move to legislative matters. Mr. Palazzo, you wanna kick that off?
I provided the city council letters that we sent out these last two weeks to some state legislators with some support of, I don't have that in front of me here, but I provided copies in the packet. The big issue that we're waiting for is the cops allocation grant. That is not sitting on the governor's desk and we're waiting here anxiously as he signs that. And hopefully by next meeting, we can report on that one.
Very good. And do we wanna go through the League of Cities Resolution Packet at this time?
The, yeah, the League of Cities meeting that Mayor Portman Murray and Councilmember Ania and I are attending later this week. On Friday, they'll have their business meeting and the league was recommending, you know, the councils, you know, make decisions on these resolutions, a few things, appointing your voting member. And then also in direction on, you know, decisions on these resolutions on which, you know, how you wanna vote on them.
So did we do that written or take each item?
Yeah, I don't know. I think do each item.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I did before.
Okay. All right. Okay, so the, the first item is a resolution supporting an alternative method of meeting public notice requirements and to advocate for revisions to the government code recognizing alternative methods as a means to meet noticing requirements.
I haven't read all of these. Have any of you? Are you able to provide us with an executive summary?
We have not provided, you know, put together an executive summary for the council.
Wants, just wants to give more ways that the cities can, can let the public know that there's meeting notices. And they just wanna be able to do that electronically. There's still some cities that are putting the notice in the newspaper of a public meeting. We're well advanced to that. Ours is on the radio, it's posted, it's posted on the internet. This is just to allow, to allow more. That's, that isn't in the law right now. And I think the more media, ways the media can say we're having a meeting, the better. Whether it's on iPads or whatever.
For, for me, the, the better the communication in, in multiple venues for the public, the better, I think, for everybody involved.
And this allows people to sign up for it if they want it on their iPad or they want the, want the meeting notices to come right to them.
I'd like to counsel to the, there's background information on each item.
Right.
Number one, it's on page eight. The item number two, it's on page ten. Some short paragraphs on, you know, the background information for each of those items.
It's interesting that this one section that says, "In recent year, this issue's come before the state legislature before, but newspaper publication groups have lobbied against it."
Well, that's, it says right here that you're required to publish it in the newspaper.
It, what, as far as the ordinance is concerned or what?
It's talking about noticing meetings.
Public meetings.
And it says, "Current requirements include cities place notices in the general newspaper of circulation."
Must be for public hearings. Not the general agenda, Brown Act agenda for...
It says, "Public hearings."
Regular meetings.
And public meetings. And we still have to do that in paper. This would allow, this would allow other, other means also mean, you know...
So for example, your annual budget, you have to have a public hearing. If you're amending the zoning code, you have to have a public hearing that are, and those notices are published in the hard copy.
Ms. Westfall, any thoughts?
Okay.
Okay. Is there a public comment?
Basically, I, I read about half of it. It's, it's not taking away what's required now, it's adding to the possibility.
Possibility. You know, a lot of newspapers, for instance, are starting to publish only three days a week.
Or online only.
We're going to online only, so it gives us some, you know, options to getting the information out to the public.
I move that we choose to support the alternative methods of meeting public notice requirements.
Resolution number one.
Resolution number one.
Second.
Okay, a motion, second. Mr. Salisbury?
I was just gonna add that, yes, it's a well-informed citizenry that can take care of its business. And that's what I was trying to speak to at the last meeting when I was very rude to this lady over here. I would love to sign up, so whenever you get that sheet, let me know, because I've boycotted the paper. I think going from thirty-five to fifty to seventy-five and, and, you know, for ten pages of half, half advertisement and religion and, I mean, stuff that I have nothing to deal with, I'm just not buying their paper anymore. So I hate to, I hate to not get my information, the people's information, because I'm not buying that paper anymore.
And that's what this would do.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalung?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert.
Yes. So the motion carries unanimous, four to zero. And the second item is a resolution relating to tort reform.
I might completely support.
Let's do it.
It's basically promoting the change of the current law so that people can't file frivolous lawsuits and expect the taxpayers to pay for them over and over and over again.
I have an opposing view because some people may have thought that my lawsuit was frivolous and of course I didn't.
Well, a judge will determine if it's frivolous.
You know, I, I consider this, I'm in favor of this, too, but I, I see it another way. Because I've seen it throughout my law enforcement career, where someone will say they were treated roughly when they were arrested and they filed this, these suits that go nowhere and mean nothing. And they just, they just file them. And so that's more of what I'm looking at, that those people go away. Or I tripped on the city sidewalk and there's no witnesses, give me five thousand dollars and I'll go away. That will do away with this. They will have to put up the money first and pay for it.
Is there a public comment? Ms. Miles? Is there a chance you could do it in two minutes' time?
Oh, real fast. I'm in favor of this because I do have a concern. People do file frivolous lawsuits. Unfortunately, it costs cities quite a bit of money in premiums to the organization that covers cities. And unfortunately, Ms. Westfall, I would hope that you would drop any appeal or anything else in the future because a judge did make a judgment that your, your free speech rights were violated.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Other public comment? Okay. Back to the council.
I move to approve Resolution Number Two regarding tort reform.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
No.
Councilmember Shalung?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert.
Yes. So the motion carries three to one. Thank you. Okay, item, Resolution Number Three is a resolution related to raising public awareness about the imminent health and safety concerns for bullied children.
Basically, this is just an educational reform to increase public awareness, to combat kids that are being bullied and probably children that are obese as well. So I would move to approve supporting Resolution Number Three. Maybe Mr. Ania knows more about this. It falls under the public safety policy, which he sits on?
It's exactly what, what you said and it's to, it's... It's exactly what you said, and it's to, it also has to do with cyberbullying. Bullying's a major thing in our country now. And you're exactly right. This is to start enhancing that and hopefully lead to some new laws that directly affect that, especially through the use of the internet, Facebook, and all the social media. I would second-
Okay, I have a motion of second. Is there a public comment? Okay, seeing, Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Councilmember Westphal?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert?
Yes. So that motion carries five to nothing. Thank you. And so Resolution Number Four is a resolution supporting the Prison Rape Elimination Act of 2003.
Yeah. Can you tell us about that, Mr. Ania?
This has not come to our Public Safety Committee meeting yet, but I do challenge 10,000 children are held in adult jails and prisons every year. That's certainly not in California. California has juvenile halls and you can't hold anyone under 18 in a state jail in California. I'm assuming this is federal because it mentions the president and it mentions the Bureau of Justice statistics. So anything to get those children out of adult jails is good. And this is for the elimination of rape on the children. So I imagine there are states in the country that still put people under 18 in adult jails.
Well, and it talks about, it says, "PRA seeks to ensure that jails and other correctional settings protect inmates from sexual assault, sexual harassment, consensual sex with employees, and inmate sexual assault."
And also including in adult facilities.
Yeah, they need the adults there, too.
Well, it's certainly supported by a lot of, you know, Center for Children's Law and Policy, Family Violence Prevention Fund, Campaign for Youth Justice, American Jail Association, Correctional Education Association, and the list goes on.
Is there a public comment? Mr. Miles?
I'd like to make you aware that when I was an employee at Pelican Bay, that rape does occur out there. It occurs all the time. Also, I want to remind some people here that a few years ago, in our county jail, there was an officer that was convicted of having sex with a female prisoner. And I know for a fact, because of the classwork that I was given out to Pelican Bay, that there is rape in our juvenile justice facilities. So I would hope that you would vote for this because one thing is, it's a deterrent that law enforcement does have because if an inmate is convicted of these crimes in California, it's another strike.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Okay, back to the council.
I wanted to let the public know that just because we're voting on this doesn't mean it's going to become a law or become an actual issue on a state level. It just casts our vote on the League of Cities level. And the League of Cities then kind of lobbies, yeah, for each of these resolutions with the governor or with our state officials. It doesn't mean it actually moves forward, but it just shows the support or non-support from the League of Cities.
Good point. Thank you.
And then I just read that the three things this really addresses is just developing standards for detection, prevention, reduction, and punishment of prison rape, collect and disseminate information on the incidence of prison rape, and award grants and technical assistance to help state governments implement the act. So it's going to cost taxpayer dollars, but it's for a good reason.
I'll move for approval of Resolution Four.
Okay, thank you. Motion?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion of second. Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Councilmember Westphal?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert?
Yes. So that motion carries unanimously four to zero. Thank you. And I think this is-
There's one more.
One on one. Resolution Five is a resolution calling for the replacement of the death penalty with a sentence of life imprisonment without the possibility of parole.
And, you know, I'd like to speak to this if I can. This one is not before our Public Safety Committee until Wednesday. It may be highly controversial to the people, the councilmember from Claremont in Southern California. What this tends to do is to ask the League of California Cities to ask the state legislature to re-commute all the death penalty cases in California and any future ones to life in prison without the possibility of parole. Because the councilmember from Claremont feels the death penalty is broken. Well, it might be broken because the courts wait 20 years to execute someone, but it's not broken in the eyes of juries that find people guilty behind reasonable doubt. And he also puts her at risk of executing an innocent person. When it takes 20 years to even use the death penalty in this state, I have not heard of one innocent person in California ever being executed. So what this is, is getting the cities, the League of Cities, involved in something that the public has voted for over and over again, and they've supported the death penalty. So I'm going to urge a no vote on that is because they're just looking at other ways to get other groups involved to pressure the legislature and the public to vote again on this, which costs the state money to put items like this on the budget that has been turned down by the voters time and time again.
I agree with you. And the other thing I wanted to point out is it says it's going to save the state $1 billion over five years, but it's going to re-house 700 existing parolees, and I'm sorry, not parolees, but those that are sitting on death row, to general population. And can you imagine if we house 700 people for the rest of their life, what that will cost over the $1 billion in savings?
Very good. Ms. Westphal?
I always thought that, or the death penalty being a deterrent, I've agreed with that. On the other hand, putting an innocent person to death is really horrific. And then I think of Charlie Manson. So I don't believe these numbers. Housing people is going to be exorbitant. I have a hard time believing these numbers, so I'm in favor of voting against this.
Thank you. As would myself. I think there's heinous crimes that are committed that are deserving of the maximum of being a death penalty. So I don't think this is an appropriate resolution. Is there a public comment?
Yes. This is kind of surprising. I was somewhere today and Captain Diller was there that when I worked out of the prison, he was one of the officers on the yard that I worked. And in this conversation, Mr. Diller said something that made a lot of sense about this subject. And it's interesting that you bring up Charlie Manson, Ms. Westphal. I think a lot of people forget about a chief justice that we once had in the state of California that for a while changed the death penalty laws in the state. Fortunately, the death penalty has been added back on. And I can tell you, in the role that I had at the prison, in my personal opinion, since it don't work out there, Charlie Manson manipulated a jury and should have got the death penalty. I know of an inmate, and we talked about this today, who murdered execution-style two-highway patrol officers in Sacramento. During this period, when the law was changed, his death sentence was commuted. And he now is housed at Pelican Bay, and I think he's in the zoo now. We need the death penalty in the state of California to ensure the safety of our children, our mothers, and a good example, we talked about it today, was the murder that recently occurred in Klamath.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Okay, is there a motion?
So I'll move that we reject Resolution Number Five.
Oppose?
Oppose.
Yeah, second.
You have a motion of second. Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Westphal?
Yeah, I, yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Councilmember Shalong?
Yes.
Mayor Slert?
Yes. Thank you. So that resolution fails by a vote of four to zero. Thank you.
And so those will be certified and taken with you to the League. Is that how we do it? I can't remember.
Is one more?
There is.
Number Six.
Sorry.
I missed it.
Oh, for the city of Bell. That's right.
Yeah. Resolution Six is a resolution in honor of the city of Bell.
May I speak to that?
Please.
This resolution is just a resolution for the entire General Assembly to vote on. I don't like the title, "In Honor of the City of Bell," after they took all that taxpayers' money over the years. This resolution, the bottom of the second page tells you, the last paragraph, that they want to acknowledge the ongoing efforts by the city of Bell to address municipal corruption. Well, I'm not at that point that I want to do that yet. And this was put forth by a city councilman in Los Angeles, which is right near Bell. This has been going on for years and years and years. And I think this is just a political ploy by the government towards them. I'm not in favor of honoring Bell for the last six months that they're trying to put their house back in order. Where were the people for all those years?
I agree. Thank you, Mr. Ania.
And you shouldn't have to honor them for doing what they're supposed to be doing. It's their job.
I kind of looked at it differently. I kind of looked at it like the new administration is working to restore the confidence of the people that they're serving. And so I think that their neighbors were just kind of wanting to provide a resolution of support, to say, you know, you're moving in the right direction and, you know, we want your city to be back on solid ground, working to serve the people. That's the way that I took it.
And I agree with Councilmember Shalong.
I don't think it's saying that we're okay with what happened over the last several years. I think it's just the League of Cities saying, you know, your city's been through a lot and we are supportive of you moving in the right direction. And I could be wrong, but that was my perception.
Thank you. Public comment? Okay. Is there a motion? Okay, seeing no motion, then there'll be no vote offered on that item. All right.
Can you appoint a councilmember to vote on these resolutions?
Mayor Pro Tem Murray. I move to appoint Mayor Pro Tem Murray to be the actual voting delegate for the city of Crescent City at the September Annual Conference in San Francisco.
Second.
Hold on, favor say aye.
I should probably amend that. Should Mayor Pro Tem Murray be unavailable in the event of illness, I would appoint Mr. Ania.
So no to him. Albows in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the motion carries unanimously.
I think you have to name an alternative anyway. Alternate, sorry.
Okay, so I think that takes care of legislative matters. And we've got the A-Team teed up and ready to attend the annual conference. And let's see, so we'll move to reports, concerns, referrals, council travel, training, and reports. Ms. Westphal?
Thank you, Mayor Slert. Now I'd like to address the poop patrol. We have a place in central Washington, and in the parks they have PVC pipe, and it has a cutout, and it's stocked with plastic bags. And so there's no reason for any dog owner or dog walker to not clean up after their pet. So that's what I was talking about. This ordinance that we have from years ago talks about fines and animal control and things like that. And I just want to tell you how happy we are that we have, South Beach was not in the city limits, but dogs are allowed to run freely and they play together. And for the most part, it's pretty nice and pretty safe. And we always take a leash with us for our dog. But it's the poop problem that I would like addressed. Okay, that's one. Number two, I attended the California Coastal Commission salmon barbecue, which was fabulous. The dinner was just fantastic. There is some notes I have. Here's some notes I had on it. I briefly met two commissioners after the salmon dinner, one from the Santa Barbara area that lived in Montecito, knew some of the people I knew. And then I spoke with Jim Wickett from the San Mateo area after the meal. I learned that Jim is an alternate for the California Coastal Commission, and he owns a billion-dollar company that does the guide and holds patents on describing the programs for TV. I mentioned to him, it sounded like his employees could live anywhere in the world. He said that was right. We spoke about some of the issues that face our city. I explained how increased sewer and garbage rate were more than our residents could afford. And he stated that if he, as a business owner, were going to move 500 of employees to a city, he wouldn't want to send them to a poor city. And that spoke volumes to me. It's been a concern of mine and my constituents, the poor being driven from this area by a multitude of things, and amongst those, increased rates. And the constituents keep wondering why the city doesn't work harder on decreasing expenses instead. Then there is this question that unless there is a hidden agenda that the city is indeed trying to get rid of its poor. So that's one of the things I wanted to bring up. And the last thing I wanted to bring up was a concern I had, having to do with our state revolving loan fund. In the loan documents that I read, it occurred to me that the first loan repayment was supposed to be made a year after completion. And I was just wondering why, since the sewer plant was just completed this year, that we made that first loan payment this year. And that's, no, actually, there are a couple other things. I met some women who want to start some businesses in our city, and I'm very excited about that. One wants to do a chocolate shop, and another one wants to create a clean and sober environment for single women and single moms. So that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Shalong?
Addressing Mr. Wickett, the-
Addressing Mr. Wickett, the alternate for the California Coastal Commission. He actually does not own that company. He's the Executive Vice President of Corporate Development for that company that he works for. And he thought our area was absolutely beautiful. And actually, I've received emails from several of the commissioners saying that they can't wait to come back to a meeting here next year and be able to maybe bring their families and spend more time. I was thinking that it'd be nice, prior to... I know this is a ways off, but after Eric Apperson's presentation tonight to honor Elk Valley Rancheria in some way for paying for that entire... especially if it's going to become, you know, 100 kids that we're serving.
Maybe a resolution after...
Something, you know, to show their...
Our gratitude.
Our gratitude, yeah, to their board, so... And then also even, you know, maybe we could work with Eric on a list of volunteers that we could recognize as well. I mean, that's incredible for these guys to take a week off of their work to come serve these kids. I think that just warms my heart. It's amazing. The Coastal Commission barbecue was very nice. I don't think I've ever been in a room full of so many liberal people. So it was very interesting. The conversations were very interesting. And what I appreciated most about it was that they weren't... You know, you think that everybody that would be associated with the Coastal Commission would be very liberal, but they really weren't. Actually, I met, you know, a big group of really nice people that I enjoyed getting to know. Attended the Solid Waste Management Authority meeting this past week and wanted to report that we had the annual household hazardous waste roundup the previous Saturday, and we served, I think it was close to 220 cars that came through the line to dump off their hazardous waste for free to the community. So I think that's a great accomplishment. I wanted to... I wish we could have done it tonight. So it's my fault for not bringing it to your attention earlier. It would have been nice to do a resolution for the Knoll family with this being the 16th and supposedly the last Knoll longboard surf classic. And we did a resolution last year. So the next time we could do it would be October 3rd, which will be like the Monday...
A proclamation or a resolution?
Or a proclamation, yeah.
Okay.
It'll be the Monday after the event, but still, it'd be nice to acknowledge them for providing us with, you know, 16 years of a great event for families all across the West Coast. And last but not least, the Warriors are 2-0. We play Friday night, 2-0 in League. We play Friday night at home against McKinleyville. JV starts at 5:00, varsity at 7:30.
Hooray.
Hurrah.
Mr. Ania?
I just have one. I attended a very early ceremony on Sunday, September 11th, at the fairgrounds that Lieutenant Garrett Scott and the chief put together for the 911 ceremony, which was very moving and very cold. Almost an hour long, but it was very nice.
Very good, thank you. I attended, with my colleagues, the Coastal Commission, their opening meeting at kind of midday on the first day they were here, with a meet and greet and a civic welcome. Also, attended the Coastal Commission outstanding salmon dinner put on by the Elk Valley Rancheria, absolutely unmatched, again with most of my colleagues. And then I've had a coordination meeting or two with Mr. Palazzo, our city manager, regarding a variety of issues. And then I wanted to say that I was pleased to be asked to attend a men's prayer breakfast meeting with the police chief and the sheriff. And there are probably about 30 participants. And it was very exciting to see their involvement and concern regarding issues in our community and their volunteering to become hands-on participants. So I appreciate that opportunity. When you have those kind of meetings, you feel like you really are kind of connecting directly with the people, which I appreciate. Then I'd also like to say a big hooray for the harbor dredging, which has started. And it looks like it's going to be close, but a lot of good, positive work is happening at the harbor. So I'm hopeful and optimistic that we will be basically fully operational in one form or another for crabbing season come December 1st. And then I guess I'd like to address an issue that was in the paper this past week, and that's Ms. Westfall's status on her lawsuit against the city and myself and my colleagues. And it was turned down by the court once again in the appeal process. So I guess my word would be, I'm very concerned about the cost or the expense to our taxpayers. And this has been ongoing. And I think it's important to remember that when somebody files a lawsuit, whoever it is, against the city, we are obligated to respond. It's not an optional situation. So you either respond and defend yourself, or you lose your rights. So we had no choice but to respond. And obviously, I'm happy with the outcome in the original decision and in the appeal decision. And I'm wondering if it would be appropriate to propose that Ms. Westfall's council stipend be attached for the collection of the cost for attorneys to defend the lawsuits against the city.
My comment on that would be, that'll be up to the city attorney to figure out how she's going to reimburse whatever the judge deems is fair.
Let me just say there's a very detailed set of laws about what can be attached and what can be levied against. So that's...
I think there's still more information to be learned.
Right, okay.
But I, too, am very pleased with the outcome. We, you know, I think we were confident going into the lawsuit that we were going to end up on the right side at the end. But it's nice to have it justified twice by a judge. And I, too, would ask that you just try to work with the city council to move the city forward, and lawsuits are getting you nowhere.
Thank you.
Well, if I could reply just for a moment...
Please.
That when I get complaints from constituents that they believe that corruption is going on and we have evidence that corruption is going on and it's just rubber-stamp and overlooked, then something deeper needs to be addressed here, so...
But you have provided absolutely zero evidence of corruption from the city council.
Should we spend tonight debating this? Should we talk about Colburn Electric? Should we talk about Stover Engineering? Should we talk about labor compliance?
That is not this city council.
No, that is this city council.
Stover Engineering has not been deemed to be corrupt, Ms. Westfall.
Well, all I can do is review the evidence, and you can either investigate it or set it aside.
I think you're going to end up getting sued for libeling people.
Are you threatening me, Ms. Shalung?
Absolutely not, but I challenge you to sit up here and actually point out a local business that is raising a family here and doing great work here and saying that they're corrupt. I think that's wrong of you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we will adjourn to our next regular meeting on October 3rd, 2011, at 5:00 PM. Thank you.